Ready?
Yeah.
Yes. All right. Good evening. It is 6:30 PM. Today is Thursday, March 23rd. This is a regular board meeting of the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education. I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Ratliff, who is pinch hitting for Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Dr. Dabricow.
Here.
Dr. Wallach.
Here.
Dr. Wise.
Here.
Mr. Lester.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's get an amber alert. Yes. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So, the next item is approval of the agenda. So, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda as written with no amendments. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
In a second.
A second.
Okay. So, Mr. Lester, then Dr. Wallach. Any discussion on the agenda? I'll just say we do not have an executive session tonight, which is nice. Mr. Ratliff, please call the roll.
Okay. I apologize. Dr. Dabricow.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Dr. Wise.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
All right. So, the agenda is approved. We'll move right into the Board President's Report. See if we can get the slides. So, I want to spend a minute. You know, we're in the middle of this. Next slide, please. Middle of the superintendent search, and we've started in earnest on the input from the community. We've done it in three different ways. We're ESC drove a community-wide survey. We also did a POSIP, which is like a text service that a lot of the middle schools and high schools use to gather input, you know, via text. And then, we also did some focus groups across the district. The focus groups were open to anybody, open to the public. We just posted, we will be here. Please come if you want to provide some input. And ESC moderated those discussions. We spent three hours last Thursday going through the feedback with ESC. It was over 77 pages of kind of verbatim comments on the open-ended questions. If you go to the next slide, please. We had 1,321 responses. Okay. Let's put that in context. The last search that ESC ran was for Reynoldsburg, and they had 210. And that was a record. Okay. So, we took 210, and we blew it out to 1,321. So, we've got a significant amount of community input, both through the online survey, the focus groups, the POSIP. This chart shows, you know, some of the themes that came out of the surveys around. Look, I'm trying to read this one. Question 10, which is overall qualities for a superintendent, and really, the top three were kind of vision, communication, and leadership, right? So, and as you go across from left to right, you can see of the 1,321, and we tried to generally put kind of where you are kind of in the survey. 651 were just from the community, 106 were business owners, 1,093 were parents or caregivers, and 333 staff. Sorry, 330 staff. So, we've got a good cross-section of staff, business, parents, and community members because we wanted to make sure that we were also tapping into folks that live in the community but may not have kids in the school anymore or yet, right? And so, get that population in the group as well. So, we dug through a lot of the verbatim comments last night, and I'll just tell you, for the most part, these themes were very consistent, but there were some head-scratches on some of the feedback, but that's to be expected when you get so much feedback. But I do think it was very valuable in helping us think through as we kind of enter the next phase of building a pool of candidates and what those candidates, what attributes those candidates should have, both experience-wise, education-wise, style-wise, et cetera. Go to the next slide, please. So, here's other top 10 responses. This was from POSIP in terms of what was three leadership qualities you'd like to see, and these were the top 10. And, you know, integrity, honesty, communication, inclusive, you know, a lot of the attributes that you would expect you in a leader of a larger organization. Because again, this organization, fourth-largest school district, state of Ohio, 2,000 staff, when you include classified, certified. It's a large employer. Next slide. And then, the full list of themes from POSIP as well. Again, very consistent themes. This was other soft skills. Integrity, honesty is top of the list, and then down all the way to experience, of course, teachers, accountable, dependable, student. You know, a lot of really good themes, a lot of really good input. And maybe the last slide that I have, the focus groups. 190 participants. Again, said select two or three qualities, the next superintendent, and what rose to the top. Again, was approachable, personable, knowledgeable, Olentangie, transparent, honest, and trustworthy. I'd say many of the attributes that are existing superintendent exhibits today, which we would expect in our next superintendent as well. Next slide, please. Okay. Question two. What do you need from the Olentangie School Board of Education for this search to be successful? Here, the top answer was understand the needs of our students and staff. I will say this. Dr. Lucas shared this with us. One of the focus groups was with students. And what Dr. Lucas would tell you is that was the best focus group of all because we as parents, we think we know what our kids want from the school experience of this, but when they have the opportunity to share that with you themselves, you know, without anyone else in the room, so to speak, the feedback was phenomenal. So, we really appreciate the input from the students as well as from the other various focus groups that we experienced. We have another slide. Here's the timeline. This is a rough timeline that we've laid out. Again, we're here like, what's today? We're about here-ish. April, no, not even April, right? We're still March 17th. So, we're taking the next 30 days to build a candidate pool, so both internal, external, within the state of Ohio, outside the state of Ohio. And then, we'll walk through the rest of this where we'll ultimately, the goal is to have a candidate by graduation that we'll be able to talk about or announce, and then, you know, under contract for the next school year. Last slide? Or is that is the last slide for me? Okay. So, with that, so that was kind of five of you that opened up to the board. Anyone want to share kind of their thoughts on the feedback they heard or anything on what we've seen so far?
I'm jumping with this. First of all, just a huge thank you to everyone who, I think, took the time to take a seat at the table and have a say in this process. It's very valuable to us. And again, to know that the record set was, was it 210?
210.
And that we exceeded it by like 1,100. I think it really is telling of how important this is to everybody, and that's, that means a lot to me personally, I think probably to the whole board. But I wanted to just offer a clarifying point on, I think it was the first slide that had the, I don't know if you can jump back to this one, because I know that when the board update goes out tomorrow, you will, the slides are accessible. So, if anyone's looking at this and they think those numbers don't add up to 1,300.
Oh, yeah.
There's overlap, right? So, that you may have a parent who is also an employee of the district. So, that's why if you're going to add those up and you're like, they can't do math. We can. So, there's overlap in those roles. That's one thing. Another thing would be when you're looking down those columns, or looking down the, across the rows and down the columns, what you'll notice too, you may see where the number, the average number looks higher. Why is that not in bold and blue? Why was that not considered one of the top traits? It's a high number, but if you look at the count of how many people valued it at, you know, in their rank, the number overall was much lower than how many sort of votes some of the other attributes got. Am I doing a decent job of explaining that? I just, I think if you don't have that context, it might look a little off. So, I wanted to make sure we were representing that data accurately. That's all for me.
Good.
And I'll just say that the comments were just extraordinarily valuable. I mean, to be able to see exactly in their own words what the community's looking for, there's a wide variety of perspectives as we would certainly expect. But to be able to see it, to understand it, and to hear from it, you know, we've looked through all of these, as Mr. O'Brien said, you know, as a group, we looked at them individually. And it really is part of the transparent process where we want to make it very clear that we're taking the feedback into account. So, thank you again to everybody that did that.
Yeah. If I could add on that real quick, and I should have mentioned earlier. One of the open-ended questions on the survey is, what question would you ask the candidates during the interview process? And there were some really good questions brought forward from the community that will help make the interviews better. So, again, thank you for that input from the community. Cameron, I keep going.
I was going to comment on those comments as well. It's so cool to be part of a process where the community's involved. People are putting in the time. It takes time to put these responses, and they're reflective, they're well-thought-out, and reading through every single one of them, every comment, and it was great. It was, I felt like it helped us to develop a good understanding. I was really impressed with the data analysis that the ESC folks did, so I'm excited about the process.
Good. Anything else on the superintendent search? Does anyone have anything else, committee updates or anything, Greg? I mean, we were here a week ago, so I don't understand a lot.
Yeah. I don't know if I mentioned Mr. Jenkins's, I think they did last time. So, again, he spoke before a House committee talking about the adding the, make sure I get the right word, right year, 2022 inputs. Also, want to thank our legislators proactively for taking a leadership role to push back on House Bill 1 and to work hard to make sure the community gets tax relief through fair school funding. So, I want to thank our local legislators for taking the lead with that. And that's all we've got.
Okay. All right. That will end the Board President's Report. Thank you. We'll go to our only presentation item. This is a U.S. Senate Youth Program, Keshav Sriram. Sorry if I said that wrong. From Olentangie High School. Rob, are you going to introduce him or don't?
I didn't know.
I volunteered you to do that, so.
Keshav is also our valedictorian, so.
Awesome.
Well done.
All right. So, if you want to come to the board.
Absolutely.
Everyone set your expectations low. Just letting everyone know. And try not to sleep. That one, too. Okay. I'm going to try this real quick. Okay. All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Keshav Sriram, and I am proudly an Olentangie for a lifer. But I'm sure everyone's not here to hear me talk about how much I love the Olentangie community and family through the now 13 years I've been here. I'm here to talk a little bit about my DC trip as a United States Senate Youth Program delegate from our amazing Buckeye State of Ohio. So, a little bit about the United States Senate Youth Program. It was established in 1962 by United States Senate Resolution 324 and is a unique educational experience for outstanding high school students interested in pursuing a career in public service. The action-packed agenda for the week encompassed the legislative, executive, and judicial branches of government, and the events included a meeting with the Senate co-chairs, other Senate leaders, and the Senate parliamentarian and historian, a justice of the Supreme Court, the president, officials from the Departments of State and Defense, and other executive agendas, a foreign ambassador to the United States, and senior members of the media. Okay. So, now that we've gotten the internet explanation of it out of the way, what does that really mean? Well, the program director called it basically the Olympics of public service, whatever that is supposed to mean. Let me tell you, I was treated like a king for a week, and I'm really wishing I was back there. But basically, our visit, affectionately named Washington Week, consisted of a fully-paid trip to Washington, DC for the top two students from every state. During this week, we stayed at the historic Mayflower Hotel and met the most influential leaders of our great nation. Now, the main reason I got involved with such a program like this was because of my interest in public policy and public service. My goal in life is to make a positive change in the world through public service and civic engagement within my community. Now, to get to the point, I had to submit an application and complete a rigorous interview with representatives from the Ohio Department of Education. Now, once that whole process shebang was over, I was playing the waiting game. Until one day, I got an email while being a TA in Mr. Thiesing's Algebra I class. After seeing the word "congratulations" in the email, I ran out of the classroom like a madman, called my parents to share the good news with them. And once I calmed down, I shared the news with the 11th-period Algebra I class, too. The excitement that I had from being selected as a delegate continued until and throughout Washington Week as we explored Capitol Hill to its fullest. Here's some nice pictures that we had there. All right. So, we went from the Kennedy Center to the Russell Senate Office Building where we met the Secretary and Parliamentarian of the United States Senate. After that, we visited the Library of Congress and arrived at the Supreme Court of the United States for a discussion with Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor. Now, I do have to give you a disclaimer. Justice Sotomayor was one of the only people that we couldn't get a picture with because the Supreme Court kind of has this strict guideline that no photography is permitted inside the court at all times. Let's get into this discussion. My discussion with Justice Sotomayor has to be one of the most formative experiences of my life thus far. Her main lessons surrounded a few quotes she told us. The first one was, if you don't know something, ask. She talked about how people have been, become complacent with not figuring out things fully and settling for half of the full picture. She claimed that real change occurred when people dug deep and asked questions about the things they don't know but want to learn about. Second and third, be afraid of saying, "I don't know," and if you see something wrong, try to fix it. Get involved. Now, these quotes kind of tied into that first lesson in the aspect that people often settle for something because they don't wish to take initiative. I think this also ties to an apparent lack of motivation, and it's something that's been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic and in schools as we see. I mean, nationwide, we're seeing children and adults alike not being able to focus on their work because of a lack of motivation that originated from the pandemic and working from home. To combat this, we have to work towards building back that motivation to learn and build back our curiosity by asking ourselves why five times, and then asking ourselves, and then what? By doing this, Justice Sotomayor told us that she was able to find her drive and what kept her going. She told us that was her eureka moment, and I quote, "Overall, hearing about her story growing up in the Bronx, living in a single-parent household for most of her life inspires me to pursue a career in public service to really give a voice to those communities that continue to be suppressed." Now, next stop on our action-packed week of consecutive 14-hour days was a visit to the Department of Justice, then the Institute of Peace, and then the Martin Luther King Memorial, before finally getting to one of the best speakers of the week. Now, this speaker really aligned with my passion for education reform, and it was Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona. He came off as more of an actual human being than anyone else that had presented to us thus far. He talked about his life struggles, how he was imperfect, and most importantly, he showed us that he was transparent. He talked about how important it is to be true to yourself, and where you put your money and time shows what type of person you are. As we talked about the meaning of this quote a little further, he opened up to us about the issues that were plaguing the American people at the national level. He went on to talk about the promotion of political agendas and how false promises were being made in terms of budget allocations toward education. In the end, he looked us in our eyes and told us that if and when we get elected to office, we better put our money where our mouth is. Now, onto his next lesson, which is especially important in a high school setting. To be good with people, you have to be good with yourself. In order to have positive and healthy relationships with others, it's important to have first a positive and healthy relationship with oneself. If we have negative thoughts, low self-esteem, or unresolved emotional issues, it's especially difficult to connect with others in a positive way. This is one place where I think the Olentangie community has really excelled and provided the ability for students to go through that kind of formative learning process and really be encouraged to try new things and discover themselves. Because it's only when people undergo self-discovery that we can really have a healthy relationship with ourselves. Now, past our discussion with Secretary Cardona, we traveled again to the Capitol to interact with our senators, heard a speech by U.S. Surgeon General Vivek Murthy, visited the White House, heard from Director of National Intelligence of Real Haynes, and concluded our week in the Pentagon. While in the Pentagon, we met with very influential members of the Department of Defense, the most significant being General Mark Milley, pictured for convenience. Now, General Milley, the nation's highest-ranking military officer and the principal military advisor to the president, was exactly how you would expect him, menacing to say the least. But as someone with decades upon decades of military experience, he had few words to say about what it takes to really succeed in life. First, he told us that we need both character and courage to succeed. First, character to make just decisions by your own moral compass, and two, courage to enact those decisions even when others are telling you otherwise. In fact, a diagram from Ms. Hulus's second-grade classroom modeled this very idea. In a sea of people walking one way, one brave soul dared to walk in the opposite direction and created great change. Now, following General Milley's advice, I hope that I can make equitable decisions in the future and act with courage to defy the status quo and inspire real change. Now, the second piece of advice he had for us was to guard against mirror images. It refers to the tendency of individuals or groups to assume that their counterparts on the other side of the conflict or discussion are similar to them in terms of motives, goals, and values. Now, this assumption can kind of lead to misunderstandings, miscommunication, and a failure to reach mutually beneficial agreement. By avoiding these kinds of potential mirror images, General Milley told us that we can become better at listening, problem-solving, and conflict resolution. Okay. Is everyone still awake? Just making sure. Okay. I wanted to wrap up this presentation by taking a second to talk about how being a student in Olentangie has really helped me in virtually every aspect of my life. Some of you may not know this, but the first time I was up here in some kind of public speaking performance, I wet my pants. But the Olentangie community has helped me so far in my public speaking journey by not only surrounding me with understanding, supportive, and persistent teachers and staff that truly want the best for every student, but also offering a plethora of opportunities for me to get involved with various extracurricular opportunities. So, thank you. I wouldn't have discovered my passion for speech and debate, policy, or public service if it weren't for the community that Olentangie has surrounded me with. I am truly grateful for all the support that Olentangie Local School District has given me throughout my almost 13 years in the district. Okay. But one thing, can we please have recess for high schoolers? Or maybe a nap time, too? That would be good. But all jokes aside, I would not be the person I am today without the helping hands and the guidance of all the Olentangie staff members that I've been fortunate enough to meet, with special thanks to Mr. Griffiths, the front office, and the Student Services staff and office that I may have converted into a second home. Thank you, Olentangie, for really preparing me for the future, and I can't wait to share the Olentangie pride throughout my life. Thank you, and go Braves. Can I grab my seat? All right. Well, thank you. Okay. Any questions or feedback? We'll start here again?
Fire away.
Well, first of all, I think if everyone was being honest, everyone would say that they wet their pants at some point in time, so I appreciate your vulnerability in sharing that. But my question is really very fluffy. I just want to know if that picture, I think it was on the first slide, if that was something edible.
Oh, my gosh. It was so good. It was a white chocolate, like, had raspberries inside.
I knew. It was like a little raspberry coulis, something.
Yes. Raspberry's inside. It was white chocolate. It was the best meal of the entire week, let me just tell you that, to die for.
That was royal treatment.
I was treated like a king. Free food, free transport, everything. I was like, what more do you want? Like, I'm free. I'm good. Let me come anytime. So, that was.
That was my only question. They may have heavy-hitter questions over here.
No, it's okay. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So, did you, did you meet other students, I'm sure you did, that you created or developed a friendship with?
Oh, yeah. Of course. I've met like, it's a funny story. I actually started crying when people started leaving, and I'm not more of like an emotional person, but I genuinely met some of my best friends through that experience from all across the nation. I met kids from Louisiana who had experienced things that I've never experienced, as well as South Carolina, the other delegate from Ohio, California, Maine, Alaska, Hawaii. So, it was great to really hear about those diverse perspectives and hear about issues in different areas that, you know, we might not be facing in Ohio. So, it was great. Yeah. Awesome. Good. What's next for you? You're graduating this year. I am graduating. Valedictorian. Thank you. Yeah. I don't, in terms of college-wise? Yeah. I don't know yet. I'm still waiting for, you know, all those top schools, hopefully, knock on wood, for something to happen. But I have been, I've been offered a full ride at OSU, so that's a very, very tempting offer. And so, staying home, you can close your ears, parents, but they want me to stay home, close to home. If it was up to them, I would never be leaving the home. But, you know, hopefully, we can kind of venture out, see what the world has to explore. So.
Negotiate everything they saved for you for college.
Oh, yeah. I do enough negotiating at home, so that should be.
Tell them where else you've applied and what you're waiting for.
Yeah. So, today, actually, I just heard back from Washington University in St. Louis. I was honored to get accepted there. I've heard back from OSU, University of Cincinnati. I got into the Ross School of Business at U-Mich, Georgia Tech, UNC, but I'm still waiting for those big schools, like, you know, the Ivy Leagues and whatnot. So, we will, we'll see hopefully by graduation, I mean, of course, by graduation, but hopefully by the end of spring break, we'll know. So, yeah. I'm sure wherever you go, you'll be very successful. Thank you. Yeah. I've heard a lot. Yeah. It's more about what you do in college instead of where you go, so I'm really championing that motto. So, yeah.
And then come back here and make a difference in the community.
I mean, I can't let go of the Olentangie community. I've been here for 13 years, so it's like, this is home. You know, this is where to be. So, yeah.
Well, and I appreciate how you've built the lessons, taken the lessons that you've learned and built upon them with everything that you're gathering there, right? I mean, that's, it's part of how you grow and mature and how you do become a community leader, is that you're taking everything that you get from all of these different places, and then you apply it to become something new. So, you know, thank you for that curiosity, right? And just the interest in serving. It's so wonderful to see in students, and thank you so much for sharing your journey with us.
Oh, yeah. I appreciate it, and thank you all for, you know, kind of creating this community that we can all kind of be with each other and learn from each other and grow really in the best way possible.
So, you got to say the tagline, "Flourish here."
Flourish here. Yeah. Flourish here. Shameless plug, yes.
I was, I was taking notes as you were sharing with us, and thank you for highlighting the idea that people that disagree with us, they're not our enemies, and that we can find mutually beneficial solutions to the problems we all face. That's a big deal. So, thank you, because the folks that are running the show, so to speak, we can learn from what you're teaching us, so thank you. And I had the chance to talk to your amazing parents coming in.
Oh, no.
And I cry too easy. I get emotional because you picked living here, because this is the end goal, right? Think of all those schools. He didn't mention Wharton, so that's on the list as well. And so, we're thankful that you chose us because you make our community better. So, thank you for sharing. thank you for sharing. Thank you for representing Olentangie and the Buckeye State so well. You are appreciated.
Of course, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rafe, the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, once again, I have to follow.
Another hard act to follow.
Oh, I left all my stuff here, oh, my gosh. See, I'm a mess.
Good, great kid.
Again, congratulations and thank you for sharing that, and congratulations, Mom and Dad and little brother.
Oh.
You don't have to do everything he does. Just be yourself, make your...
Oh.
It's okay. All right.
How do you do a birthday celebration?
Nice, enjoy.
I have people walk out on me all the way, time for Shavu. All right, well, again, thank you for being here. Thanks, Mr. Griffiths. Appreciate you and everybody else. Thank you for being here. As always, I start off with our Living the Mission slides. This is one of our great programs. It's Educator Rising Chapter for our Teacher Academy kids. They do a tremendous job, and actually, we held our certified interview today, and I think we had some graduates of our Teacher Academy program over at Liberty High School today, but 44 of our kids went to the Educator Rising State Conference, and they performed very well. They've been recognized as an honor chapter for their overall GPA, their service work, and for receiving first place for chapter display. So, numerous students in that group placed in the top 10 across the state, so they're going to be going on to a national competition. So, congratulations to our Educator Rising students. Had an exciting weekend last weekend, last weekend, two weekends ago, or, yes, it's been two weekends ago. Liberty's Boys Hockey Team won the state championship. It's the first time this team from central Ohio has been the Ohio High School State Champion. You know, that's just a tremendous honor for them. They had a great season. Hockey's really grown. I can't remember, I think we started hockey in the district in about 2007 or '08. I was Principal of Liberty when we had started the first team, and it's really grown and taken off. We've got four great programs, and obviously, Liberty has reached the top.
They had come close before, right? They were...
They had, and so was Orange Bin Frozen Four. Orange Bin Frozen Four as well.
That's good.
Yeah, it's great. They also were recognized at a local media event. Their team manager, Brendan Garrett, his nickname is B-Money, was actually cerebral palsy, and the team embraced him as the manager, and 10TV did a feature on Brendan and his relationship with the team. They hosted an activity, SLC Buddy Adaptive Skates, so appreciate all their work to support those students as well. But congratulations, Liberty High School Hockey. Our DECA students are on the competition trail, and they do tremendous job every year. They are, many students are moving on to the International Career Development Conference, in which you have to place fourth in the state or higher. So, you see there, 11 from OHS, 24 from Liberty, eight from Orange, and five Berlin students. So, they're going on to Orlando for their international competition. And again, DECA is one of our most decorated programs, so congratulations to all of our DECA students and teachers. We've got some really sharp math kids over at Shanahan Middle School and Orange Middle School. They participated in the state Math Counts Competition. Shanahan placed fifth out of 25 teams, and we see here, congratulations to Arush, is only the second Olentangie student to ever qualify for a national competition by placing third in her individual competition. So, that's another, as with everything, another growing program, Math Counts. So, we've got to highlight some action items. We have two administrative resignations. Both are Assistant Principals at Liberty High School, making life-choice changes. Allison Hall's and Jerome Price, we wish them all the best in their future endeavors. And then, there's three business items of note. Flooring upgrade improvements throughout the district with Levitate Plus Flooring. We have the guaranteed maximum price for Elementary 17 for services there at $6 million. This is for the site work for the building. We already approved the GMP for the overall building. And then, we have an agreement with Hellis Construction for replacement of the track at Hyatt's as action items of note. And then, our important upcoming dates. I think everybody is certainly always ready for spring break coming up, so tomorrow's the last day of school before break. We do have a conference exchange day Friday, April 7th, as I did with the other schools, highlighting Olentangie High School's presentation of Beauty and the Beast. I'm sure that will be well-attended. And then, our next Board of Education meeting, April 13th. With that, what questions do you have?
So, on the Elementary 17?
Yes.
So, we were going to do groundbreaking...
Yes.
...tonight, but the weather wasn't cooperating until we got it. When will that open?
Seventeen?
Is it next?
October, August the 24th.
Should be 24.
24, yeah. We're in 22/23, next year's 23/24. It's August the 24th.
Got it.
Yep, yep. So, we'll obviously engage in the redistricting process in the fall of next year. Someone will engage in the redistricting process.
Coming back to lead that?
I wanted to tell to Shavu, you know, it was too bad, because when he's president, I want to be his Secretary of Education, but, you know, see if we would have bought a bit on that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rafe. So, for those who don't know, Ryan Jenkins is our treasurer. He's not available tonight. Madison Ratliff is our Assistant Treasurer, been with the district for...
A little over five years now.
Five years now? And so, he's going to present the Treasurers' Report.
I will keep this nice and short for you guys this evening. We don't really have anything to present on or report on at this point in time. That will be coming with budgets and five-year forecasts in the next month or two. Tonight, we have some treasure action items. We have donation to accept for the Olentangie Liberty Athletic Boosters for supplemental coaching position. We have amended appropriations for our purchasing. We have our February 2023 Board Financials up for approval. We have the Meta Master Service Agreement, which is a collection of fiscal products and other forms within the district itself. And then, on a separate item, will be the Board of Revision Resolutions. Any questions?
Any questions from Sir Ratliff? Nope. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think public participation is next?
Yes, sir. We have two public participation. First up is Brad Relinger.
First, thank you for allowing me the time to give you some feedback, and the topic I want to talk about today is Glen Oak Elementary's participation at Orange High School for the Civil Rights Performance. My name is Brad Relinger. I live on Holderman Street. I have two kids that go to Glen Oak Elementary. We moved to the school district about six years ago. The purpose of moving was really to choose a school district that our kids can stay at from kindergarten through graduation. My wife and I grew up in a small town in Ohio, and when we set out, we looked for a few things. One was a big enough school that had plenty of opportunities, no matter what our kids are into, and we definitely found a big enough school. The other part was really understanding diversity and inclusion, right? We, it's really, it's something that's really hard to judge from the outside, right? Because we don't know the school district, knew a few people here, but it's really hard to judge, especially in a school this size. So, what we did is, we looked at, how does the school present themselves publicly? We found a few things. First, we found Board Policy 2211, which states, and I'm going to read this verbatim, "Board of Education believes that multicultural education is of vital importance to the process of development of students and staff, the achievement of harmony within our community, and the stability and success of our nation. The school curriculum, instruction material, and professional development should reflect an inclusive perspective. The goal of an inclusive perspective is to help students understand themselves and others, and appreciate and value similarities and differences in all people." It goes on to talk a little bit more. The other thing we found is the Equity and Inclusion Action Plan, which has a stated goal to ensure an accurate and inclusive curriculum for all students, starting in pre-K through 12th grade. Next, we found the Olentangie District Pillars, which talk about opportunities for students to follow their own path. And after we moved to the district, we participated in the One Olentangie Community Conference. This year, the keynote speaker was Kurt Russell, 2022 National Teacher of the Year, who told a story about when he was in kindergarten in 1977, and his kindergarten teacher read him a book, read the class a book, about Martin Luther King Jr. And Kurt stated that was the first time he saw a book that where every single page, there was a little boy that looked just like him. He was five, six years old. It was 1977, right? It's before Martin Luther King Day was a national holiday. It's before, it was partisan your curriculum. But that teacher found a way to represent all of her students. And Kurt shared that was the first time he remembers feeling like he belonged, and it still drives him to today. Now, I understand the current political environment continues to put pressure on school districts regarding diversity, inclusion, and even curriculum. There's many voices, many strong opinions. I'm not here to debate all those. I'm here to make three points. First, to remind the board, to remind you guys of the principles that you have outlined about us as a school district and who we are as people when it comes to diversity and inclusion. Second, as I mentioned, I have two kids at Glen Oak Elementary School. Over the past few years, I've gotten to know the teaching staff, the guidance counselor, the intervention specialist, school psychologist, and the entire admin staff, and there's been a lot of conversations. Conversations about special needs, conversations about inclusions, and a lot of hard conversations that we've navigated together with our kids. And I've been repeatedly impressed about their response and reaffirm that we made the right choice of choosing Olentangie and Glen Oak Elementary specifically. The team has it in their hearts to do what's best for the kids, and my kids trust them with any topic. There is something special happening at Glen Oak. And lastly, I'm a father. I'm doing my best to raise two kids in a world that's vastly different from when I grew up and will be exponentially different from when they're adults. I'm also a middle-aged, middle-class, straight, white man. There's only so much I can teach my kids about diversity. My youngest was five years old and in preschool, when, for the first time, one of her classmates excluded her best friend because of the color of his skin. So, when I start to hear things today related around the event I'm talking about, about how schools are not the right place to have discussions around the civil rights movement because it's too political, I can't help to think, if a kid at five years old is old enough to exclude somebody because of the color of their skin, they're old enough to have the conversation. Allowing my kids to hear from those black students at Orange High School about diversity, about the civil rights movement, about Black History Month, and to give their perspective is something I can't give them at home. Not only should the school be facilitating these discussions, but today, it's really the only place, as a community, where we can have constructive, facilitated, age-appropriate discussions about diversity and inclusion. And those that say that these conversations at school will bring hard conversations at home, I would say, I hope so. I want to thank Mr. Peters, Glen Oak, that entire team for facilitating this, and thank you guys for what you do here.
Okay, our second and final public participation for the evening is Robin Howes. I apologize if I've mispronounced the last name.
Quite all right. Robin Who's, 8553 Pondville Lane. All right. On January 18th, Mr. O'Brien wrote that the board expects a high level of communication and transparency with the school district community. Bearing the FAQs related to transgender guidelines, multiple levels deep on the district website is not providing the transparency this community expects or deserves. Not only is the path to the FAQs not obvious, but you also have to know to scroll down the page once you get to the right page of the website. It is not logical to look for information related to transgender students under data and continuous improvement. It is also not apparent to most parents that transgender FAQs would be posted under reporting bullying and harassment. Also, not even mentioned in the FAQs, is the Olentangie Title IX Support Form. It is quite concerning that a student could work with the school to fill out a gender identity support form, which allows them to use a different restroom, or locker room, or even different overnight lodging, or pick a new name to be called at school. I would like to request that a copy of the OLSD Title IX Support Form be added to the FAQs on the district website to inform parents that the form exists, along with the fact that if a parent's signature, along with the fact that the parent's signature is desired but not required by the district, for the form to be put in place and on file. This evasiveness by the district is cultivating resentment among the students, which is not creating a positive and supportive education environment for all. It is hard for students to treat others with grace when the emotions of those students are being prioritized over the emotions of their own by staff in the district. Parents and students deserve to know what the rules are related to who can use what restroom, or stay in what room at an overnight trip, or change in what locker room. So, I ask you, as a board, to please provide communication to our district about what is happening within the walls of our buildings. Thank you.
All right, so, any more public participation?
That's it.
All right. So, we'll move on to the treasure action items. So, Mr. Ratliff, do you want to present the treasure action items, please?
Treasure action item A is the Recommended Approval to Accept Donations. Treasure action item B is Recommended Approval of the March 2023 Amended Appropriations. Action item C is February 2023 Board Financial Approval. Action item D is Recommended Approval of the Meta Master Agreement, Schedules 1 and 2 for fees and services. Action E is actually the Consent Approval of Items A through D.
Okay, so, could I have a motion from the board to approve treasure action items A through D, please?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the treasure action items? All right, seeing none, please call the roll. Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rafe, you want to present your Superintendent action items?
Yes, sir, I'd like to...
My mother's F. No, F is just a recommendation to approve A through E. No, no, that's E.
F is a different one.
F is different.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Oh, is it BOR?
Yep.
Action F is Recommended Approval of Board of Revision Resolutions.
Oh, why did we do that separate? Okay, sorry, I misread that.
Thank you.
So, could I have a motion to approve the treasure action item F, which is the approval of the BOR revision resolutions?
So moved.
Give me a second, please.
A second.
All right. Any discussion on treasure action item F? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Rafe, would you like to...
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you, thank you. I'd like to recommend approval of Superintendent action items A through E.
All right, could I have a motion for Superintendent action items A through E?
Still moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion on Superintendent action items A through E?
I do just want to call out and praise the Orange High School for starting the Active Minds Club, supporting mental health there, which is always well-appreciated, so I was glad to see that as one of the agenda items.
All right. Mr. Ratliff, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.